Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the last meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board for the year 2020 and what a year it's been. First, I'm going to make certain that all my colleagues are alone. Vice Chair Dexter.
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
Ms. Tenapoli?
I am alone.
I'm alone as well, and I'll note here that we're down three owing to scheduling issues as well as the impending storm. Mr. Oliver is off doing his work tonight. So we have a quorum. Let me first note that the meeting is being conducted as authorized by Governor Cuomo through Executive Order 202.1, last updated as 202.79. This executive order allows public officers' meetings to be held virtually as long as certain criteria are met, including allowing everyone the opportunity to watch it as well as speak. And we do both thanks to Mr. Kropnik, Councilman Kropnik's zealous endeavors. Please join me as we reaffirm our fealty to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first time on the agenda is a new public hearing for Cardinal used auto parts. The applicants are seeking to basically take over the operations of an auto salvage yard. As part of the process, we did a site walk. We noted that there were cars and tires stored right now within the setback areas. The applicants already proposed moving those back out so that the setback areas are protected. We mentioned adding landscaping because there's required screening between residential and non-residential views. The applicants indicated an interest in doing so. We also noted, though, our last meeting from the site walk, that there's a lot of topography, existing woods, as well as rock outcrops that already do a lot of the screening for us. In the interim, before we have or during the time we advertised the public hearing, we heard from a neighbor, Mr. Stortini, who basically requested, I believe, additional screening and some other issues. I'll let Ms. Labruto answer that ahead. I believe Karen, you're here. If you want to turn on your video. I believe Linda, you're with us as well, and Ramon, you're with us too. If you want to, any of you want to turn your video, you're welcome to. Actually, I don't see Ramon anymore.
I'm still here, Michael.
Oh, there you are. You're into your real name. My apologies.
That's okay. That's okay.
We named yourself. Okidoo. Karen?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Can I, should we open the public hearing?
Oh, nope.
Hearing, yes.
I can motion over the public hearing.
I will make that motion, Anne Dexter.
I'll second it, Diane Tenapoli.
Thank you. All four of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There are no nays or abstentions. Thank you. Thank you, Anne. Karen, back to you.
Sure. So my name's Karen Labruto. I'm a senior planner with the Chasen Companies. I'm here with Linda Stancliff, also of the Chasen Companies, the landscape architect, and Ramon Lee, who is the applicant. We're here for our application to the planning board for a scrapyard license. And I have a presentation I can share if that's all right.
Please do.
Okay, sorry, my screens are a little different today, so I'm not quite as familiar with it.
Don't worry, we're, it's holidays and COVID times combined.
Okay. So hopefully you're seeing the presentation at this point.
No.
Not quite. Oh, hold on one second. Sorry. Okay.
There we are.
Yep, okay.
Now we have it.
Great. So for the benefit of the public hearing, I'll just run through some of the summary. We're located at 19119193 Cardinal Road. It was formerly known as Pick and Pull Salvage. It's on the 21.8 acre parcel. It's in the Green Belt zoning district. It's an existing and licensed scrapyard. The proposed application would continue the operation as it exists, although we'd be bringing the site into compliance, removing car storage from the required buffers. There's no new construction planned. We would be formalizing fire lanes and adding mounted fire extinguishers. They requested approvals for a town scrapyard license, which requires also a special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. So the scrapyard's been there since approximately 1970. There's substantial natural vegetation on the west and north sides of the property and along the east side. There's currently car storage encroaching within the 50-foot buffer. And we have an existing, some existing non-conformances. There's an unoccupied dwelling in the front yard. And also the lot coverage is exceeding the allowed. There's a New York State Class C stream. It's not regulated by the DC. It's not a trout stream. And there's a small pond on site. The site's not located within 500 feet of a church, hospital, public building, or place of assembly. So here's the site plan, and I'll just zoom in a little bit here. So this is Cardinal Road here. This is the south end of the site. The north end of the site is over here. The entry is right about here. The unoccupied house is here. These masses of shapes are the car storage and the space in between represents the fire lanes. The asterixes are the mounted fire extinguishers. Let's see. The squiggly line is vegetation to remain. Let's see here. Okay, so to just go through some of the operations, the new, as I've said, the new operator will continue the existing operations. Will continue to do dismantling inside the buildings, soft crushing with a loader of end-of-life vehicles for removal off-site. 24-hour surveillance. The site's gated and locked at night. There are going to be three employees, open seven to five, Monday through Friday, and seven to one on Saturdays. Cars are primarily coming from auctions, two-car carrier trailers daily with five flatbed trucks daily. The car storage, as shown on the site plan, is for 1,850, including a stacking area. And again, there's no encroachment on the 50-foot wide buffer, the stream buffer that's regulated by the town, or the small pond. The, the site, the use, scrapyards are highly regulated. Environmental Conservation Law, Article 27, requires annual reporting and site visits. It, it looks into, you know, waste streams and how materials are recycled and/or deposited otherwise. So I'll just run you through some historical imagery here, just to kind of get a better idea of what this site has been about over the years. So this is from 2004. Like I said, the site's been in place since 1970, but starting in 2004 here, you see Cardinal Road. And 2009, again, Cardinal Road is on your left. 2011, Cardinal Road's on your left. You see, it's pretty, pretty well-packed. The site, the, the license that the existing owner has on it allowed for 4,000 cars at any one time over the course of the year. Although that, I don't think was the typical operation. I think in general, he had some cars stored on site. And in 2016, you're seeing a little bit less. And in 2019, you're seeing quite a bit less. And again, this is because the current owner, you know, wished to sell the property. So just to go back over the site plan improvements. Looking back through those aerials, what you'll see is that there aren't really fire lanes well articulated. And so, you know, what we've done is, you know, to articulate the fire lanes, which is required by the code, and to add the required mounted fire extinguishers. We've pulled car storage out of the required buffers, and we're increasing landscaping along Cardinal Road. So here's a view of Cardinal Road looking west. This is the accessway here. You see, there's some, you know, some existing trees. There's the screening fence, and we've got some wires here. This is a view looking east. And so I'll just run you through the landscaping plan here. So this is the west side of the site. And what we are showing here are white spruce, eastern red cedar, and let's see, some spice bush up at that entry. And sorry, green giant arboridie. And so we have a pretty good amount of landscaping. I think we, we tried very hard to work with the trees that we had and to fill in the vacancies otherwise. You know, we wanted to, I'm sorry, this isn't as clear as I had meant it to be. We wanted to make sure that, you know, there's a screening fence, so we put some trees on the kind of inside or property side of the screening fence, where the, the wires wouldn't have really allowed good growth of trees otherwise. And then where we could, we placed them on the roadside of the fence. And so let's see, I'll show you over here the entryway. Here's the spice bush, and again, some other trees right in here. And I do have a separate landscaping plan, so I can, so you just pull that up here. Sorry, I should have gone to this first. And that's, that's much clearer. So that's it for my presentation. I, I can speak to the, the comments now if that, or to the comment now, if that would be helpful, or I could wait for a few minutes if, if there are other things to discuss.
Ms. Labruto, why don't you go ahead and start on that as well?
Okay. So let's see. I think, I think what we wanted to point out, we certainly understand that, you know, this is a difficult use to live by. But what I wanted to point out is that I, what I noticed in the letter from the commenter was that he said he'd lived here for the last 15 years. So you know, here's 2004. The house is not here. There's no easement. You know, his, his easement occupies the 50-foot buffer on the east side of the property. So in 2004, it's not here, right? So he knew, you know, that the, the use was in existence as it was. It was obviously, you know, there are already cars up here along the east side of the property. You know, moving into 2009, similar circumstance. Into 2011, you know, again, heavily packed. Into 2016, less so because the owner, of course, is starting to kind of bow out. So, you know, we, I guess we're, you know, we're wondering if, if the applicant should be held, you know, accountable for visual and aesthetic effects of the, of the use when, when the commenter chose to build a house, you know, with a driveway along the east side of an existing scrapyard. But certainly we do understand that this is a, you know, a, a very valid concern. And, and so I, I guess I just wanted to point that out to you and see.
Before I let you go, the white line that's to the right that runs, well, for me, north, south, up and down, is that a property line?
No, I'm sorry. It came off of Google Earth and it couldn't get rid.
I didn't think so. So the property line is actually much closer to where it's cleared. Am I correct?
Yeah, and actually, let me, um, sorry, just a little bit. This is probably a better image for that. So, yeah, so the, here's the eastern property line, and, and you can see his house here.
Reason why I'm pointing this out is because when we did our site walk, all of us who were present that day, which I believe were five of us, looked specifically trying to find the house. There's a large amount of intervening vegetation. There's also about, I'm going to guess, maybe not quite half, or a little bit over halfway, if you were going from the east to west. The topography rises fairly sharply in through that area. It's actually cut into the hillside. That's part of where the storage is that shouldn't be there, but the, the topography also, the, the rock outcrop also screened the site. So all I'm saying is that when we were there, we were there during leaf-off. I need to make that as an important point. We did not believe that you could really see much of the house, which means that I don't think you'd see that much of the operation as well because of all the the sort of screen that exists for the natural vegetation that is on Mr. Stortini's property. But I'll let my colleague speak to that issue as well, because that's just my opinion. But we're very careful about ensuring there's proper screening. One of the first things we identified at this site was because of its sheer size, there's a lot of screen that would be required, and our code, as part of its requirements, specifically for this kind of business, requires evergreens and a fence around the entire use of the entire property. But we are also allowed to use our own judgment and relaxing standards such that if there's existing topography, it's natural vegetation that seems to screen properly, and it's okay. As I said at the very first meeting, the majority of the board, this is only our second auto salvage yard application to review. The first was Maltz. That's in a very different scenario. It's surrounded by a fairly well-developed neighborhood on small lots. These lots are all large. I believe the current owner lives to the one to the west that looks really big. Again, property owner's screening is supposed to be on the commercial side, but to put in screening up where it's mostly rock, which would help the resident, Mr. Stortini, I'm not sure how well those would do. Water does not flow up, it flows down, and that's why I think that the vegetation along Cardinal Road will do better. That noted, that's just my own opinion. I'll get back to a few more comments later on. We first start with our consultants. I know Mr. Zataro and Ms. Axelson didn't really review this because there weren't a lot of issues to review. So I'll skip over them and go.
Well, I have a question, actually, Michael, if I could.
Please.
As I was, as I was looking at the plan, Ted, so there isn't any kind of a certificate of occupancy or anything that's issued for this, right?
Well, they have to do a site plan, and I don't know if they have to go back to Mr. Westermeier, and there is a license that is issued by the town clerk.
Okay, so the reason, the reason that I ask is that how do we ensure that the cars are arranged properly per, you know, the site plan for fire access? And then also, how do we ensure that, you know, the landscaping gets put in, you know, on other, on other like projects, we have to issue a certificate of occupancy, so.
They won't, I, I won't authorize the license to be issued by the clerk until that's all in.
Okay.
So someone is going to need to make sure that the aisles are open and that you can be able to see the landscaping from Cardinal Road.
Right, it's an operating license that's personal to the operator.
Okay, all right, okay. So just assuming that they get site plan approval, are, are they looking to open up before, you know, the weather improves where they could put the landscaping in?
I had spoken to the existing owner and suggested that he put those in about three weeks ago, so that we didn't have to wait to transfer the license until spring.
Yeah.
So I don't know if he actually has installed the plants. I, I had hoped he would before the freeze.
Okay.
That does bring up a good issue, though. I know that we've had approvals like this that have occurred in the winter months when landscaping would not be advisable to be installed. I don't remember how we've handled it. In some cases, I think we probably pushed it as a condition over to issuance of CO, but there's not a CO here.
There's not a CO. There's just a license. And we would want, we would want a performance bond.
There you go.
But we don't, I, I would rather not do that if we don't have to, because it's really complicated.
Well, I mean, what else do we have if they want to, if they want to start, assuming they get approval, they want to start, you know, like, operation? And they can't, they can't put, you know, the landscaping and then.
Well, the operation can continue. They just can't transfer it to the new owner.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to go figure out something, and I hate to use the word like hammer, but, you know, for lack of a better word, we need to have something, something to hold on, you know, to the applicant to make sure that these things get done. Again, I'm, you know, I'm sure that they're gonna, but you know, we have had like cases where we've had, you know, like issues in the past, and just, you know, how do we make sure that it gets done?
Performance bond would be it, basically. Ms. Labruto, comments?
Just wanted to respond to Ms. Moss's request for the landscaping to be done. I think there was a little bit of a possibly a miscommunication or just a, maybe a lack of communication at one point. Ramon and I actually spoke a, a few weeks back, and he asked, you know, he asked me about putting in the landscaping, and I said, no, we should wait until it's finalized by the planning board. And so I think the message was missed there between you and the existing owner and, you know, telephone tag to, to where we got. So I guess I just want to point out that the intention was there by the applicant to do the right thing, but I just don't think we, it was clearly understood why or what was meant to be done. So nothing.
Actually, actually, I think that what you did was correct. We hadn't reviewed what, we had just said, can you add some things? And that was it. So I think that you followed the correct advice. Ted may not have been aware that we had not specified precise locations or waiting for you to propose them. So I think what you've heard here, even though I know Ms. Moss hates this, but if you're intending, if Ramon is intending, and his partner are intending to take this business over as soon as possible. Victoria, I'm going to let you weigh in on that again. That's what we would do normally. It's a performance bond, and we would hold it until Ted could inspect the landscaping, or in this case.
Yes, I mean, that's the only way to do it in this case, because there's no CO. Or we hold up the, the license. And they operate under the prior owner's license, but for insurance reasons, they, I mean, that might not work for their business.
Ramon, what do you think?
Um, what if I could, could, um, give you guys some kind of a bond, you know, as far as for the landscaping? Because I mean, we do plan on starting as soon as possible.
Okay.
And I mean, our intentions is to, to, you know, we keep, want to keep everybody happy. We don't want to, you know, we want to move in and get along with everybody, you know? That's how a business grow, you know? And if we could give the town some kind of a bond, instead of paying to put, that's what I was talking to Karen, like she said, you know, we put the trees, they're never going to grow, regardless if it was three weeks ago or a month ago, because, you know, it's cold, you know? So if, if, I mean, we can pay you guys to get it done. I mean, I, I'm serious. Like, let's say whatever it costs.
We don't want to say, we don't want to say it quite like that, but.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, you know.
No, no, we're good. We're good.
You know, I mean, as far as, as, you know, leave the money for the town. That's what I mean. So that once you, you guys make sure it gets done, because I know it's easy to say, oh, we're going to do it, and then it doesn't get done.
Ramon, the, the bond, the performance bond is not for us to do it. The bond is to, it's, so Pete would typically make an estimate of what the cost would be to install all of them. And I believe a performance bond is about 10% of the total cost, am I right? And you would post that money.
Yes.
We would, we would have the ability that if you didn't do it within a certain time, to call the bond from the bank, which nobody wants to ever have that done.
Yeah.
And then we would install it so that we would be protecting the additional, the, the residences who'd be
Exactly, yes.
blocked by this. But we would hope that you would do it, and then you would just say, okay, I want my bond back.
Yes.
That's how this normally works.
Yes.
So, well, I'll, I'll let the, my colleagues weigh in on that, but that is one possible solution. Because I, I sense that you're ready to do this, and I'm pretty sure the owner's ready for you to do it, too.
That, that means that they have to go to the town board and have a resolution and accept the town board, be accepted as to form and manner and amount and all that. So it's not a quick process either way.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think they're talking about a ton of money, and I mean, I, you know, it may, it may be easier for him to just post the cash bond.
The town still has to.
No, I know, I know, I know, I know. But I mean, it's like a pro forma thing, really.
We're also fortunate to have a town board member, Councilman Kropnik here, who I'm not going to call on him to speak, but he's observing all this and so can go back and speak to the town board members as well. Because I know that generally speaking, our town board is interested in expediting commercial development. Pete, thank you for asking, raising that issue.
Yep.
Michael.
Yep.
It's a, it's a very minor comment that I raised at one of the agenda meetings that I noted, Karen, on the plans, that it says existing wooded area, which is great. But I guess what I'd like it to say is existing wooded area to be retained. And then it's up to the board. I've had a couple solar projects in other communities where the existing wooded area to be retained is in lieu of having to do more landscaping. And they've added notation that indicates that if, you know, some of the trees fall down, that they would be replaced. So that's just a thought for the planning board.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, did you have more comments? Yes?
Yes, I do. Mister, I'd like you to possibly consider that Mr. Stortini's driveway is an easement. It is not actually his property. His property is landlocked. So, you know, when he talks about his driveway, his driveway is on someone else's property.
Thank you. And we're aware it's an easement, and that may be why it's not electrified. I'm not positive, but that, that lot was formed in a very bizarre way long, long ago, because we don't allow landlocked lots, ever, not anymore. So thank you for your comments, Ms. Polidoro. Anything in addition?
Um, no, at the last meeting, you classified as type two, and you referred it to the Department of Health. Department of Health came back, and they didn't have any significant concern.
I was just going to add myself. We were, we circulated this to DOH, and their only concern was that if the house were somehow reoccupied, they'd want to make sure that they were involved to ensure adequate septic. Obviously, as it's seen, the house, because it couldn't be occupied as it is right now without extensive rehabilitation. So let me start with my colleagues. Vice Chair Dexter, comments?
Um, yeah, I'm just curious about the landscaping plan. Did, were you planning on adding anything to the east side? Because when we did look at the site, we did know that it, it was kind of sparse on the east side. There is a, there's a small farm just directly east, and we could see it fairly clearly. And there are some scrub cedars throughout there, but we thought that a, a few evergreens of some sort, I leave that to my colleagues, sprinkled in would help to give more thorough screening. And I think that's kind of what we're talking about throughout all this, not, not extensive landscaping on the sides, but just trying to fill in little patches where you do have a really clear view with leaf-off. I think Michael and I were saying like two or three in that one area would work, because the way the land rises, it, it blocks the view from, from most directions.
So Anne, you left a little bit earlier than the rest of us. We walked back to that site. As it turns out, it wasn't a farm. I don't know how to describe it. It's a, can someone else step in? Karen or Ramon? It's, uh, Mr.
I don't, I'm sorry, Michael. I, I don't know exactly what it is, but just for the record as well, I was talking to Bob Miller today, and he said that that driveway belongs to his property, which means, you know, the right way is ours. But in, and then again, we do plan, and I was also spoke to Karen about this, our plan is to fence eventually everything, you know? But as you know, and you even said it yourself, you know, it costs a lot of money. And, you know, we need to at least start, you know, working so that we can build some revenue to, to get things going, you know, and looking better. Because we got to invest into the property, obviously.
Anne, I, I think it's a Mr. Alt or a Ms. Alt, at one point had llamas there.
Right, and they said peacocks, I think, right?
Peacocks, so it's not a resident, it's, it's, it looked like a farm, but it's not in use right now. There's a vehicle that's stored there right now that I'm not sure what it is.
Okay.
But, uh.
It's a former use.
Not authorized.
I could pull up, sorry, I could pull up the aerial of that area.
Please do.
That might be helpful, yes.
There was an ancient approval on that property called Nob Hill Ranchets. It was supposed to be a mobile home park in the seventies. And it was never developed. And then there was a lot of logging that occurred there, or logs were brought in. I couldn't tell which. And there's, you know, old equipment in there that seems to be less equipment there now than there used to be, and the vegetation seems to be growing in nicely. Yeah, that's the, that's the paddock area and where the.
So these are the residential uses down below that you can see.
Yes.
They're effectively screened by the topography and the trees.
Right, right.
That's right. I, I don't know that, so I can't do an arrow here, but.
Oh, sorry.
When we were, or.
Do you want me to pull that back up again?
You, you might be able to do an arrow, Michael.
Not that, hold on. Is this so I can annotate? Let's see if I'm doing, can you see this?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no. Oh.
Yes.
We're seeing something.
Okay, that, the area we were talking about, if, if this is the easement, I believe, the access easement, right about in through here, right in through here, you can see there's some scrub cedars in through this area, but not very many, and this is where you can see this structure. This is the only point in through here. So what Anne I talked about was adding some evergreens right along the easement, on the west side of the easement, the driveway.
It's almost, it's almost exactly halfway in, at the middle of the property. It's almost, it's almost exactly halfway in, at the middle of the property, right on the east side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because there's, there's that little, this was the area where there were some school buses and things stored. That's why I remembered it. We walked back there at the end and that's when we were told by the owner that this was not a residence. We, we couldn't quite see because as Ted said, the vegetation is going back in over here somewhat. So all we could see was a structure and at that point there was a vehicle right about there.
Yep.
If we think that, if you think that there should be something added, and I want to just say to Ms. Stancliff, if you're the one who did the landscaping proposal, I like that you mixed in the spruce and the cedar, because in this part of town, we don't want to see highly manicured landscaping. It should all reflect a very natural look so that the screening appears to be just woods that grew up on their own. And red cedar is, I think, a great suggestion. And that's what Anne and I were thinking of over here with a couple, with three or four red cedars to provide more greenery to block that view. But again, it doesn't appear to be a residential use. It appears to be, I'm not sure what I would call that.
Right, okay. That, that does make a difference. You know, I, I understand, you know, if you're a neighbor living there that you would be concerned and that this would be an opportunity to try and have something done. You know, I just don't know what, you know, what can be done. I like the, I like the landscaping along Cardinal Road. I think that'll work great. And I like the fact that they're cleaning everything up, pulling everything in with leaving the 50-foot buffer, having, you know, determined drive, drive aisles and having fire suppression. You know, all in all, it's a huge improvement to an existing use. So that's kind of all I have.
Thank you, Anne. I, I should point out too, that what Ms. Labruto said is on point for some of what Mr. Surtini's concerns were. The license that exists now could accommodate 4,000 vehicles, whereas they're proposing 1,850. I know that because the use has been sort of in decline as Mr. Miller was looking to sell it. You saw in the earlier photos that there were probably at one point close to 4,000. So the permit that they get from the DEC will, I assume, be tied to the 1,850, am I right, Ms. Labruto?
Um, I believe so, but that's, that's a little beyond my knowledge base.
Ramona, do you, Ramona, do you know, I believe that, that you're, you're tied, your approval, your permit from the DEC is tied to sort of the maximum, because they're looking to see, as I always like to say, the worst possible, meaning to, to them, the most cars on there, so it would have possibly the worst environmental impacts. Whereas to you, it would be the best possible case where you'd have so many cars that you have lots to sell. So do you know if you're.
You meaning how many cars we would have at, at one point in time in there?
Your maximum allowed.
I, I would think that, you know, we would be, I don't think we would go exceed over 2,500, let's say. You know, because I mean, that's a lot of cars sitting. That's a lot of money sitting as well. You know, so even though it does sound good, being a lot of cars and having, I mean, we need to keep moving the, the.
Yeah, that's a lot of cash outflow that you're not getting money off necessarily. So that is a leaner, leaner operation. It's going to be more profitable.
Yeah.
How many, what's the max that you can fit under the site plan that you presented to us with the aisles and the setbacks?
So we presented 1,850. I, you know, I presume to get additional cars, storage, it would require additional stacking areas.
Right.
So you, you couldn't go to 2,500 without coming back before this or to show those new areas, right? Or are you saying you'd just be stacking higher in, in the stacking area?
Um, I mean, I guess I, I understand it that, yeah, we would have to fit within the site plan that we've presented to you. I just don't really quite understand the correlation between the permit that DC is providing and DMV is providing, because there's also some DMV permits there and how that relates to, to the site plan. You know, where the, the 4,000 number comes from this annual report that the DC requires these scrap yards to report annually, you know, how many cars are on site during the 12-month period and a whole bunch of other questions. And so that's where we found that number previously. You know, I don't know what, I don't know what the total car storage was, was indicated for this site when it received its license from Hyde Park originally, you know? I don't know what steps were taken, et cetera.
I just want to make sure the applicant understands that they can't go to 2,500 without additional approval, that what you're presenting tonight is what is going to be approved.
Well, I, Victoria, I think listening to the description of the DEC permit, that may be 4,000 cars, but you sell some and bring some new ones in. So you may process 4,000 a year. That doesn't mean that there's 4,000 cars on site at any one time. That's what it sounds like.
Okay.
That makes sense, Ted, now that I think about it. I'm going back to my head from Malt. Yes, it's, they want a maximum number of what came in and what went out, just like in accounting, first in, first out or last in, first out. It's, they want a total of the, it's, it's a, it's a running total, in other words. You may have 1,850 as a maximum at any one time, but it's the, they want to see the total volume. So that's not going to be what your maximum is per day. That's going to be how many you process throughout the year. And for everyone's sort of edification, it's important to remember that the stacked cars are basically ones that are crushed, I believe. They're ones that already been soft crushed. So the stacking they show, I believe, is for two up to three. After that, it would be probably a little more dangerous to try to keep stacking more vehicles up top. Plus, it's not easy for them to find parts when they're stacked. That's usually, as I understand it, Ramona, correct me if I'm wrong, but the stacked vehicles were the ones that mostly had been stripped of all the parts. They're going to be sent out and sold for scrap metal?
Yes, correct.
So in other words, the, the stacked cars to increase would just be waiting for them to be sold for metal. It wouldn't be sort of active cars being waited for, used for parts. So there may be, it's possible there could be more than 1,850, but those, as I recall, I'm speaking to you, once they're smashed and stacked, you're looking to get them out as fast as possible because you want your money back, wherever money's left out of it.
Yep.
Yeah. So does that make sense to everybody? In other words, they may stack, it's probably cheaper or probably easier to sell a bunch of them rather than just two cars. No one's going to come out there with just two vehicles, but if they're going to come out for, say, 20 or 40, then you've got real scrap metal to sell. So there may be an accumulation there for a bit of when's waiting to be sold for the scrap, for scrap purposes. Does that sound right, Ramona?
Yes, yes. The, the truck usually comes and picks, picks up around nine to 10 cars per load. So that's how we do all the recycling, you know, the tires, like we explained to you guys and everything. That's why the cars are stacked, but you, you wouldn't be no more than three cars.
That's what I thought. I didn't see any, I didn't see any. Most of them were just two and then some had three. Beyond that, it looks like it might be too rickety. Okay. Any other comments, Anne? Thank you. Mr. Pickett, comments?
Uh, yes, I think the cash or performance bond be a good idea. Let Raymond do it. You know, let him have his choice, whatever's the quickest and easiest for everybody to do. I think when we, Michael already covered the site tour. Like I say, the screening going to the north of the house is good. He couldn't see anything. The only thing that I've thought about lately is that per some of the pictures that Mr. Surtini provided in the email, of anything you could do to minimize the stacking of any uncrushed vehicles. I don't know if that's such a thing, but just to keep the height to a minimum, because it's just, you know, the taller it goes, it gets as much attention as a mobile phone antenna. Yet everybody starts looking at it so that, you know, in the areas where it, where you can't see it, maybe it'd be easier to stack them. In the areas that are more visible, try and keep the stacking to a minimum. I don't know, Ramona, were you, are there any cars stacked that are uncrushed?
No.
Okay, all right.
No, because it's unsafe. Once you stack a car on top of the other, you know, the car is very wiggly, so we don't do that, yeah.
Okay. Then that covers it. It was just to try and make, you know, you want to keep the height down as much as possible for doing. And so those are my inputs.
Okay.
I also, you know, whenever we see pictures, it's hard to know, as Liz has sort of trained us to believe, you need to be understanding where they're taking and what the perspective is, et cetera. A proper visual and, you know, analysis, we would be the ones talking about the receptor points where they would take the pictures in the first place. Because some of the, some of the pictures he said did look like, wow, he can see a lot. So, but I'm not sure where they were all taken from.
Yeah, it looked like they were from his driveway, I think, and.
That's what I thought.
And it was, you know, again, or from his easement, you know, so. Uh, and it was just the idea that it got me to thinking that any, again, the higher you go, the more attention you're going to get. So, you know, watch where you're doing the stacking.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. That's a great point. Ms. Labruto, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that we have identified the stacking area on the site plan and I can show you where that is, is if that's helpful.
I remember where it is. Please draw it up so everyone from the public who's watching can see it.
So, again, this is the east side here, south, north. And so stacking area is here.
Right.
And this is kind of a high point up here and then it descends down, but there's all this vegetation right here.
Okay, good.
Well, I note it says existed wooded area to remain.
Yeah, we corrected that, I think, in most places, but we might have missed some. But I think also Liz's other point about trees falling and replacing those in her recommendation.
Well, I'll let my colleagues address that as well, but generally speaking, when wood falls in a natural vegetated area, it's going to rot, decompose and other things will replace it. I, I don't like seeing disturbance that it would take to come out and put trees out in a wooded area, but I understand why Liz is saying that. In this circumstance, again, this is a very rural area. We're trying to keep it as rural as possible. But I'll call on my colleagues again to see about what they think about replacement trees. It also seems somewhat onerous to try to keep track of any trees that may fall. I mean, if you had a whole stand that fell, yes, but that'd be very difficult for us to condition that you'd have to keep replacing them. Although general site plan standards are that say if any of the trees that you're planting die, they should be replaced, the new ones, because that's, that's requirement under code. Mr. Napoli, comments?
To pick up where you just finished, but if you follow that train of thought, then if a whole lot of trees started to fall, well, some are going to have the clear vista. Is that what you want?
No, but I'm trying to figure out what would cause a major amount of trees to die unless it's fire, because there's not one single disease that will attack a healthy mix of, of tree specimens. Each, like, say, there's an anthracnose for maples, there's an anthracnose for London plane trees or sycamores, but they don't attack each other. They're, they're specific to the tree that it is. In other words, a fire would be something that I would imagine could fell a large area and you'd have a blank area again then, but just. Many tornadoes, we do have those here, correct? So I guess we could have a note added that in the case of some sort of catastrophic event where a large, we could have to define the large area, but it was denuded of vegetation, they would be required to come back and replant it for screening.
That to me seems much more reasonable. Because I understand both sides. I was just trying to figure out, you know, if there happened to have been a cluster of trees, what do we do? But if it's a, you know, climate event, then, you know, we can replace them. As far as the other comments, I am in complete agreement with my fellow colleagues, as small as that group is tonight. And as always with Ms. Alkison, thank you. Nothing else to add.
Anne and Brett, do you want to weigh in about the idea of replacing trees? If there was a substantial amount that got destroyed somehow? Or whether you think that even individual trees should be replaced if they fall?
Uh, to be not individual trees, it would be such a rare event, something like that would happen. I don't know if it would require a note. I think maybe it's too far down the weeds.
How would, how would it be, would it be a note on the map or?
Best for it to be enforceable, we should have placed a note on the map that just would say something like in the event, I mean, Victoria would have to work up the language, but in the event of catastrophic events such as a fire or tornado or hurricane or something destroying, and we probably need to define it as a certain size, like maybe a half acre, where that's all destroyed within a half acre, so you'd have a blank area that they would need to, to replace. The thing is, is that's such a vague, open-ended thing, replace. How would you know how much to replace, what to replace it with?
It sounds really subjective.
It is, and it's kind of open-ended, which I don't believe our attorney really likes us to have things that are open-ended like.
We would, I mean, we could draft it so that they return to the planning board for a site plan amendment for landscaping, so that, you know, you'd have to come and take a look at it, but.
I can't think of when this happened before, but again, we're relying on natural vegetation for screening. So if the, if we did have such an occurrence, we could have that placed on the, on the map as a condition. I'll agree with that. Anyone else have anything else to add or questions for the applicants, the consultants?
Was there anyone else from the public here?
Councilman Krepnek, did anyone else sign up for this application?
No.
So, and the neighbor, Mr. Surtini, had come, had, had contacted Councilman Krepnek saying he might not be able to be here. But I noted that we would take his letter and pictures under advisement and speak to the applicants about it. And yes, I do think that when you purchase a property next to a commercial site and decide to live there, it does come with some burdens on it. And having walked the site, again, it seemed to me most of those photos were taken from the driveway easement rather than from the house. And the house is what we're supposed to be screening, not sort of the accessory use, how you reach it back and forth. So colleagues, we were prepared to close the public hearing tonight, with the exception of leaving open seven days for comments. Does that still seem apt and wise to you?
Yes.
Okay. Before I ask for that motion, I just want to point out that to the applicants, the next, our next meeting is January 6th, which we consider, consider taking action. At the same time, the next town board meeting, I believe, is January the 20, hold on, let me look. January.
Don't they have the January 1st?
They have a January 4th, they have a January 4th reorganization, but we wouldn't have, we would not be able to meet in time ourselves to condition for the performance bond or cash, whatever surety. So we'd have to, they'd have to take action after we meet next to consider an approval resolution. Once we do that, then they could work with the town board to try to get on to find a way to have the town board accepted. But we also would have to have, the condition would be that the, Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, with the form and substance, the bond would have to be acceptable to you and to the town attorney?
Uh, yeah, the amount is acceptable to the engineer and the form is acceptable to attorney and town board.
So Pete would need to work up an estimate for us before the next meeting. We would need to both consider an approval resolution as well as to consider referring the amount as acceptable to the town board. And then they would have to work out, your attorney would have to work out the form. I believe, I believe that Ms. Polidoro and Mr. Waplansky, who's the attorney to the town, could provide your attorney with a, the form they'd like on those.
The, the easiest, I, I mean, I don't know what your financial situation is, but depending on the estimate, the, the easiest thing is going to be a cash bond, because then the form is the form.
The form is the cash. Ms. Moss?
I think typically the applicant proposes an amount and then the town engineer reviews it and accepts it, rather than the town engineer prepares it.
Ms. Dancliff, can you propose what the cost would be since you did the landscaping plan?
Yes, I can.
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Struggling to find the microphone.
Don't worry. So Ms. Dancliff can work with Mr. Sotero on that. In other words, if they're trying to get this business up and running, there's a series of steps we need to go through that are fairly tight for January. So Karen, I'll let you and Ramon confer about what you want to do about the bond. Certainly you should wait to hear from Ms. Dancliff. Linda, it's what that amount is. Because I don't know if you want to put up, you tie up cash for that many months until the spring operates. So, because the normal bond is 10%, that you have to have, find someone to provide the bond. The cash is the cash. And I don't know how much you're looking at either, but landscaping typically, the specimens we require are usually about six to eight feet tall. So they're not like saplings that cost nothing, so there's going to be an expense to it. And plus the installation, but, and any gator bags, if, if Linda thinks those are appropriate, somewhere to water. Again, the advantage is that the land does go low there and if you plant it in the spring, you should have plenty of water flowing down to provide, you know, natural water unless we have some strange, strange sort of a spring drought, but that's very unusual in these parts. So anyone else have any other comments? Ted, your hand is, your mechanical hand is still up, not your physical hand, your computer hand.
That might have been my cursor, sorry.
Oh, no, that's mine. Sorry, I just, sorry.
So Michael, can I just ask a question then? Are we, are we closing or adjourning? So, Michael, can I just ask a question then? Are we, are we closing or adjourning?
As I said, we were prepared to close and then take action at the next meeting. But, because I don't believe we're gonna receive any more comments other than the neighbors that we've heard from. I think we've addressed most of those comments, some of which will include adding the notes on the plan in case that's a fire occurred somewhere in the vicinity near his house.
But don't we need the estimate and?
I was gonna say, that's new information, yeah.
Well, the estimate is not information for the hearing. You're gonna vote separately on whether or not to recommend the bond amount. Okay.
Gotcha, okay.
That's why I said, first we have to do is consider the approval resolution, then we would have to act, take action on what the bond amount would be.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for the clarification.
No, you're my, you're my, you're my right brain for a reason. Make it a motion to close the public hearing with the proviso that we will accept written comments for seven additional days.
So, move Diane Denapley.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Further discussion, on favor, please, the four of us, raise your hand. I saw four. My motion carries unanimously, Victoria. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Labuto. It's been a pleasure working with you. We'll see you after the new year. Ms. Dancliff, I believe I've worked with you before. It's a pleasure to see you again. Ramon, welcome again to town. We're excited to have you here and see the operation grow and become successful and make money for you and for the town. So, in the meantime, since we won't see you until the new year, have a very happy holiday. Stay safe and stay well.
Thank you, same you. Happy holidays, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next application is continued public hearing for Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza. As a reminder, the applicants already have an approval for phase one. I hope that everyone's had a chance to drive by and see the new construction. There's two new turrets, and a third, there's a petament going on. It's very exciting to see when I go by. So, Ms. Libolt is here, Ms. Libolt is here. First, make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll make the motion. Brett Pickett?
Second, Diane Denapley.
On favor, please raise your hand with an eye.
Eye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. So, Ms. Libolt and I, after our agenda meeting, met on site and walked around. I raised all the issues that we had raised in our agenda meeting with her, one of which was making the traffic circulation truly one-way around for drop-offs and student deliveries. For the, in other words, drop-offs for the commercial businesses back there, and the students would be dropped off the same way. We are aware that there won't be police out there. There may be a vehicle sneak in. But I also know that the nature of these businesses are that parents don't just willingly drop by. They're, they have an appointment or a regular schedule. So, I believe that the business can probably take care of that. Second issue, there were the issues of the drain spouts on the northeast corner of the building, one which flows right now out into the driveway that's between the back of the building and the, where the propane tanks were shown. And we looked at the propane tanks and think that even though the tanks are gone, I should say that that fenced enclosure should probably leave, because there's no purpose to it, and we don't want kids thinking about it. We also discussed the grade to the, where the children would walk back up to the play area. The slope was shown at 202, and then the area where they do the crosswalk is, I believe, 201. And there were concerns expressed about water flowing down and the fact that there's very little sun back there, so it could also cause icing where the children would walk. The two downspouts, Ms. Libolt, I just spoke briefly earlier tonight. She's looking into seeing if they can't be rerouted into the southeast-facing landscape bed right there. And that's probably the biggest summary of the issues that we discussed that day. Kelly, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that was, there was one more, I think, was to change the fence.
Oh, oops. A solid picket fence, right?
Yep. Well, on the one side where it's adjacent to a residential parcel, we're gonna change that to a solid fence versus the chain link fence.
Thank you. I forgot about that one. I wasn't looking at my notes. I was trying to rely on memory, and that's getting faulty these days.
That's a pretty good memory. I had to print the comment letter very quickly and remember everything. So, I think you summarized it. We did make all of the changes that were requested at the last meeting and submitted those to your office. The purpose mostly was to get the submission over to county planning, so they could look at it. I understand that we haven't received their comments back yet. But we did make all of those changes, so we will make those changes. I'm wondering if, I guess we'll make those changes and get those over to you for the January meeting, the January 6th meeting.
I think it'd be cleaner than having a lot of conditions myself.
Yes, yep.
I also forgot to add for everyone, before I forget, when we were looking at the elevation, the south elevation where the entrance would be, there were also two other items. One, there were only, there was only the striped area between two ADA spaces that was used for children drop-off. I believe at the agenda meeting, we all thought that should be three spaces there, so they would just move the two ADA spaces out. That may be in Liz's memo. I haven't looked at it yet.
It is.
And last but not least.
I'm sorry it was so late.
No, no, no. It's also, you asked me for an update from the meeting, and I, my days have been swamped lately, so I didn't get to it until right after you sent the memo, so if you received that email. At any rate, there was also on the elevation, it showed a door to the far right where the southeast corner of the building is, and we were like, there's no door there. There's a door that faces to the east. It's an emergency access door, I believe, that lets you out, that would let you ride out into where that drain spout's letting water out onto the asphalt. So, that's the door they're referring to. It's not a door that's on the front that would be used for access. So, that was cleared up. Let me then turn it over to you, Ms. Alkison.
Yeah, I, I saw your recap, and Kelly, you've seen the comments again. Sorry we got those out so late. It's a long story. The one thing we, we couldn't really find was the, whatever is the southeast planting bed, because I thought there was something there. And I don't know if you have a plan to share, or if I can share my screen?
I have a plan either way, but southeast is down at the southern part of the Williams, the former Williams lumber. There was no.
Yeah, that I know, but I couldn't see where the bed was, like, on existing plans or something.
Oh, there's not a true bed there. There's just a series of evergreen trees that are along that southern border. Yeah, so there's a, Mr. Chairman and I were out, and we saw those trees there. So, we went, we actually discussed those trees. So, there's a whole, it's not a formal bed. It's a berm with evergreen trees on the berm, right on the property.
Let me add that when I was there, the dead ones had been removed, because there were ones that had died. They've been removed, and actually, the evergreens have filled out nicely where the, they were probably planted a little too closely at first. Maybe that's why some died. So, but they've, the spread now, you have a very effective screening for all that parking area from the house next door. Then again, Liz, I believe it is.
So, that being said, is 10 too many? Because in my comment, I counted whatever had been shown on the plans, either by Michelle or Joe, and there were 10 there. So, I put that into my comment as a note. I don't know how many are there now. Remember, Kelly, you providing photographs? And it looked okay?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I don't necessarily think that the label needs to be changed. I don't think we can determine how many there are or there aren't. I could go down and actually get underneath and look at the root, the stem of the tree. They've, as Michael had indicated, they've all grown into one another, and it's almost acts as a hedge.
It is a hedge. It is a hedge now, basically.
And I think the number matters less than the note that the board wants of the existing arborvitae to remain and dead specimens to be replaced, and just forget the number.
Actually, again, dead specimens shouldn't be replaced, because they've been removed, and that's what's enabled them to create that, that growth side to side. You know, when I look back on it, when I look back on it, I realized they were planted close because they were narrow columnar trees or specimens. And so, to get the screening, they put them closer. There wouldn't be space between them. But then, as the tree wanted to grow out to the side, it more or less fought with its neighbor, and some lived and some didn't.
Maybe just leave the notation as is then.
Yeah, that's what I think we can do.
Okay, so I'll just take that one off. And then everything else on here, I think, is reasonable. I'm not sure, though. You said, "Address the following items behind building 1A. Remove the existing shed, fence, and debris behind building 1A."
Sorry, one more thing. The debris is gone. I was very happy to see. Most of the debris is gone. That's all been cleaned up.
I'm not sure what, I don't think there's, oh, the fence that had the propane tanks? Is that what you were referring to, Liz?
Yes.
Okay, and then the shed, I think that was the little area where someone went into for the propane tank. I'll reserve judgment. I don't think there's any reason why that needs to stay there, but I just want to check with the property owner, make sure that there's no reason why that needs to stay. But I'm just gonna check that one and make sure that that's okay to remove.
What Ted called the outhouse.
Labelled, oh, go ahead.
No, no, this is what Ted called the outhouse, I recall. Kelly and I looked at it, and we were like, you know, it does. I said, no, it's a kiosk, and I said, it does kind of like an outhouse. She was right.
We're someone who's waiting for a bus. It would be a great structure to someone who's not waiting for a bus to get picked up. Okay, so we have no objection to the changes. I think we can make those and get those in before the January 6th meeting. I just had, so I think the only thing we're waiting for is county planning. And I had one question that I just wanted to discuss, similar to the prior applicant, is we're hoping to start this work in the beginning of January. We're hoping that the tenant can move in March 1, which, of course, would be challenging to get a CO, because the landscaping will not have been installed by then. Is there any way we can put a note on the plan conditioning the landscaping to be installed by a certain date, so that we have no restrictions on receiving the CO for that space in March?
We, Ted, don't get mad. We could call it phase three. But then there's, but then there's no link to a CO.
I don't know how we can, you know, we can do this, but we don't want to restrict.
Here's what I want to suggest. Let's have this as an internal discussion, and then get back with Kelly.
We understand your concern, and we'll see how we can work it out.
Okay, very well. I just want to put it on the record. Thank you.
No, I think that's, that's, it's a big issue to have when we're going through winter times, particularly something that's potentially as severe as the weather we're having right now or supposed to have. I don't see snow out there yet.
It's coming down.
Oh, okay. I'm in darkness over here. Maybe that's why I'm, oh, I see it, sorry. Anyway.
Video camera.
It's difficult to figure out how to do these when site plans are extended and work happens, and it may be finished, completed in the middle of winter when you can't plant. So, let us discuss this, and we'll get back to you, Kelly. It's a very valid comment. Thank you. Liz, we kind of cut you off. Anything else you wanted to add from the memo? I know Kelly more or less just agree with everything, but.
No, and you know, some of the stuff that we're saying remove, if it, if it's shown as an existing thing on the plan, maybe we can clean up that, you know, kind of stuff.
Thank you. Pete, comments?
I just had a couple of small things that we put in our letter. Just, just basically had to do with the roof leaders discharging into the planting bed in the front and the amendment of the soil and, and some, you know, minor edits and clarifications to the amended SWIP. But it's, you know, pretty minor.
Thank you. I know the amended SWIP has been kind of hanging out there, but I've been hoping you and Tad would handle that with Mr. Berger. Ms. Moss, comments?
I have, I understand that we're unifying the signage. The, what I see is that the Antonella sign is the same style. And I haven't contacted the sign maker yet to verify that it will not have an outline of a light. But I will need to do that before the 6th. Because the current sign is not in compliance. I issued the permit. It was not on the detail that it was going to be outlined or visible from the front, and it needs to be changed.
Tad, just so I'm sure, you're gonna call Grace. Okay, very good. Okay.
I'm not sure I followed all that. The current sign does not comply.
That's correct.
That's the current one, but the, and the new proposed sign?
The new proposed sign is supposed to be compliant, but I don't have enough detail of how it's constructed to verify that.
Now I get it. Thank you. So, you don't want to see, you don't want to have this one slip, another one slip by?
Again. We're fixing a non-conformity on this route.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
I think the planning board will need to relax the sign letter height to a certain standard based on the distance. So, that's just gonna need to be in the resolution.
I believe that the, we did this already for the kind of the uniform for the, we'll put it in the resolution. I'll make sure that Victoria and I get it in there. Because that's really standard. Thank you for pointing that out. I forgot. That's true. Ms. Paul Doro, comments?
No, looking forward to seeing the new plan, and we'll talk internally about how to address your issue.
I mean, we could also require a performance bond like we just mentioned doing for the other site, but Tad's gonna go, Tad's already wigging out, so.
Well, you do one, you do them all. I mean, everybody wants to finish up inside in the winter, and the ground's frozen, and nobody can seed and mulch, and nobody can do the landscaping, and it just gets, like, out of control. I can't manage all of those and figure out what to return them and do the inspections and.
It's more a burden on you. I know. That's why I said, that's why we don't want to have many of these. But we're gonna figure something out, because.
I had made a suggestion a while back, and you guys can think about this, but if you had a site permit fee, where it just was related to the site work, we're having the same discussion in the town of Poughkeepsie with the supervisor, Jay Basely. They have the same problem. So, if you had a site permit that you were able to kind of tag everything to, it's an opportunity to seek another fee that you could really kind of attach some of these things, so it separates the building issues and the site issues. Just a suggestion.
No, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna need any suggestions possible as we review this.
Can we, can you explain that a little bit more? I didn't follow that. How does that solve the issue?
Building permit that's issued for a property, and this is a perfect situation where the building work is gonna be done prior to the site work just because of winter weather conditions or paving plants are closed. If the town were to create a separate application that is just a site work application permit, it would have to be approved by the town board. There's a separate fee, and it could be managed by the, you know, the zoning office as well, and Pete's office could do inspections and monitoring and so forth. That's something that then you can tie the conclusion of the project to that will allow the applicant to proceed. We have a lot of projects in other municipalities where you have multiple buildings that are being built at one time, and you want to seek the CO for each building as they come on board to get your financing. And that's always a challenge, is that the building permit is tied to the, the CO is issued, and it's relative, it's tied to the completion of the site work. And it, it really shouldn't be, because for financing purposes, when we're doing construction loans, we want to turn the construction loan into a conventional loan right away. The banks will not turn the construction loan into a conventional loan without a CO.
That's why we've been doing the phasing for, to allow CEOs for individual buildings. In this case, though, there's no, there would be, the phase would have, not be tied to anything. That's the problem, because there's no CO for landscaping. So, we'll, we'll discuss this internally. We've got, well, if it's snow keeps coming down like I see it is now, we've got plenty of time for discussions.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's support, assistance.
So, anything else, Victoria?
Not for me.
Okay, Mr. Pickett, comments?
Just, Kelly, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on this. You know, originally, we're talking about one-way access that worked out, identified layouts, parking identification, whatever. Yeah, for people, for potential people you want to lease to for the, for the empty site. So, just want to say thank you. I think everything's going good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli, comments?
I would like to echo Brent's comments that please let the owners know. We appreciate how well things have been going, that we, I was excited this week to see the construction. It was like, wow, it's like an early Christmas present. And to thank them again for always thinking of Hyde Park. Thanks.
I will extend that, and I did last meeting, and they appreciate that immensely. So, I will extend that. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
I would echo my colleague, my colleague's comments 100%. And just as I'm listening, the level of detail on this site is, is really something else. And, and Kelly, you do deserve a lot of credit for being able to work through the minutia. It's just, it's incredible, but it's, the site just continues to get better. So, thank you, and thank the owners, and.
Will do. Thank you. I will. Thank you.
And I only have to add that I want to thank you for when I called you and said, "Can we get right now, right, right here today?" You did. It was very productive that way, because I could actually say, "This is the stormwater drain I'm talking about. This is what I'm talking about. This is here. This is here." And it was, it was so easy to work it on site. It's, it's, there's never any, anything bad with going to a site, because you can just see it so much better. So, I think that we're moving forward very quickly. If we, if you can get the plans to, so there's three weeks between this meeting and the January 6th. So you have sort of an extra week, you should get these two, it's technically by December 22nd, a week from, or less than a week from today. It's in process, if you can't get them, if it takes a while because of the holidays, that you can't get them until, say, the 26th or 27th or 28th, I think that's okay. We, we know what we're looking for now in, in the Delta to look at, it's going to be traffic, a few of the things that we just talked about today to sew up. So, and if you can talk to your clients about whether they want to keep the little shed, we'll call it again. Because you're right, it wouldn't be much room, there might be four kids who could fit in there, but if it's a safe area, you might want to relocate it. And I mean, it's pretty small, I remember looking at it when we were there. So, and I also appreciate the fact that you got rid of all the storage shelving debris, as I called it, all that was gone. It was nice up back there.
Just kind of tossed out there, but thank you. And I did speak to Michelle before the meeting, so we'll address that, that low spot by the playground, so we'll deal with that as well.
Thank you, Diane, you had a comment?
During our agenda meeting, at that moment, we thought this was not going to give them enough time, Kelly, to do the turnaround for the January 6th meeting, we thought with the holidays and everything, that would be putting an undue stress on everyone, which is why we thought the 20th. But that won't, no longer exists, I just wanted to bring that up just in case.
Well, we're going to try to get everything in for the 6th and the reason is that our construction schedule had to start in construction in the Williams lumber space, January 1, in order to make the March deadline. So we have a commitment. So that's why it's very important to us that if we are able to finalize the approval that night immediately, the next few days will work to try to get the plan signed so we can receive the building permit. Fortunately, your building inspector has been incredibly cooperative and has reviewed the building plans already. So he, at this point, is ready to issue the building permit. We just need the final approval so he can issue that. So we'll be a week or so behind schedule, but we're hoping to start that first week in January.
Get us the plans quickly, then we can all review them. If there's any issues that, that I hear from any other board member individually, I can communicate that back to you because I know you want to have as little conditions as possible if you want, if your schedule is that tight.
Right, yeah, so we can get the plan signed right away.
Which means that I'll, I'll try to schedule a Zoom meeting with Pete, Victoria and Tad next week. Any planning board members want to join to discuss what to do about maybe the landscaping issue? Because I'd like to resolve that quickly. And the rest of this week is booked, we do, fortunately, Christmas is still, for those who celebrate it, I should add, it's still a little ways out. And there's two days, I believe, left of Hanukkah, so we'll just consider this week out, but we'll start next week. All right. Victoria just pointed out that unless we, yes. Okay, Victoria, do you want to?
So.
Raise that issue?
Kelly, I was just noting that the, it's the town's policy that there's a seven-day written comment period because of COVID. And so even if the public hearing were closed on the 6th, there's a seven-day comment period. In this case, this public hearing has been open since, I want to say August.
Is there any reason why we couldn't close the public hearing this evening?
We've, we've had no, we've had no comments.
So, um, we are waiting to hear back from county planning, which could be new information. So we could close the hearing with you running the risk that if county planning has significant comments, we may need to reopen it.
I, I, I would ask if we could close the public hearing, I know county planning has looked at this. As Victoria, you've indicated, every year we've been before the planning board for this application. So I don't expect significant comments, of course, I've probably cursed myself, but I think we'll have to run that risk because we are on a pretty tight schedule to get this commitment for March 1 for them to move.
And Victoria, thank you for thinking of that, she just, she chat, she sent me a chat and I was like, uh-oh, I forget about the seven days. Particularly with applications like this where there's been no public comment whatsoever. So what we would do then is, go ahead.
As I say, we had a public hearing on phase one where we had no comment and then we had the public hearing on phase two starting in November. Again, no comments, so.
Be more comfortable if we waived the seven-day hearing rather than closing now, so that, I mean, consider waiving it when we close the public hearing at the January 6th meeting. The more I think about it, that seems to be more, we could say we're waiving it because there's been no public comment whatsoever thus far. And that way we don't run the risk of having to reopen, re-advertise and reopen.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Brent, that sounds good to you too?
Me.
Okay, Kelly, so we're going to adjourn to January 6th to get us the plans in, that gives county planning time and it gives us a little extra breathing room. But that way we can also just waive in this one instance, that time period, okay? Thank you, make it a motion to adjourn this to January 6th.
So move Diane to Napoli.
Good, Brent Pickett?
Everyone in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly, great to work with you, again, thanks so much for turning on a dime and meeting me that day like that. And have a very safe and happy holiday ahead, we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful holiday.
Happy holiday, Kelly.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Tell the owners happy holidays from us.
See you next year.
I will, thank you, take care.
The next item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Hospice House. The applicants are seeking approval to construct a 14-room, a 14-patient-room facility. And also to combine two lots, one which opens on to East Dorsey Lane, that would not be used for anything other than green space, as well as a new opening or entrance and exit on 9G. We've all had the opportunity to workshop this a lot, we had our first public hearing at the last meeting. We heard about, from about five residents, we've also received letters. We've also reviewed letters sent to the zoning board of appeals who's shared them with us. And we received a new letter from Silvana Bellino, who I believe might be here tonight. Maybe not, but I know that Donna Hudak is here for the application to possibly speak. So make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Brent Pickett.
Second, Ann Dexter?
Thank you, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries, and Mary Jo Curran is here as well, I forgot to add. So, let me turn it, oh, there you are, Mary Jo, I see you right now, sorry. Let me turn it over to the applicants. I believe, Michelle's here, yes, Michelle? And first, before I go, I'd like to point out that Ms. Zurfus and Mr. Berger and all the applicant's team have been responding to each letter as they've come in, including the Silvana, the most recent letter that just came in. Michelle's done a Herculean job of responding to each. If I could summarize, a lot of the issues that are raised include, first it was drainage at the last meeting, Mr. Sotero, and he'll be talking about this, did meet onsite with the applicants. We have a much better understanding now of the drainage situation. It appears that Mr. Leonard, who lives across the other side of East Dorsey, that his water drainage issues are not impacted at all by this development. It also appears that a lot of the water from the pipes that the neighbors who live on the north side of East Dorsey, that water does dump onto this property, is then goes into a wet, wet area and then it again proceeds out onto an area where the auto dealer, our dealership, our repair shop is. That's not going to change and it's not going to cause any backup onto neighbors' properties, further backup, I should say. In addition, Mr. Sotero, and again, he'll explain this, found a swale that seemed to be a little bit clogged. So he's working with Mr. Berger's office to see if they can open that up again and keep it better, better, more open so that the neighbors' parcels can be drained. The other issues are the idea that this is a commercial use, which even though under our zoning code, this is a residential use, but we accept that in terms of building, et cetera, that it will be, that it is a commercial use. However, as Ms. Zurfus pointed out in one of her many memos, commercial uses are allowed in neighborhood cores. In fact, they're encouraged, general commercial is allowed, general commercial covers a variety of businesses. This is going to believe, we believe, a quiet use, you won't have many people going back and forth, you don't have a lot of deliveries. That could change if you had, say, a tractor supply, I mean, there are many things that could go in here, maybe not at that size that they're proposing. But there are many uses that could go in here that would impact, we believe, the neighbors far greater. In other words, we've been looking at a lot of the impacts, the board has been assiduously looking at potential impacts caused from the site. And I want to point out to, again, everyone listening, SEACR does not contemplate impacts to neighboring parcels, per se. It's meant to be community-wide impacts, that doesn't mean it has to affect everybody in Hyde Park, but it's a broader area. However, as we've gone forward, and we've been discussing this both internally with consultants and myself, as well as publicly with my colleagues, it's potentially, it's possible to conclude SEACR, but still use your special use permit because those require that we really narrow down on a granular level and say, what's the impact to the neighboring properties? Because that's really what the criteria are to meet your special use permit. So what we're looking to do as we move forward with this application is conclude SEACR so that they can then move forward with the ZBA and find out whether ZBA is even going to allow it, it may not. But if they do, then we would come back to us, there'd be more information concerning rock removal, drilling, et cetera. And that would allow us to potentially have a stronger set of protocols set up if there's blasting required, et cetera. I also want to point out that Ms. Zurfus provided both the memo and a, a lot of presentation from back in 2006, noting that blasting occurs all over the county. It's, in essence, a well is a vertical pipe. But when blasting occurs, it often occurs near horizontal pipes that carry water and sewer. In many of the cases that Ms. Zurfus cited, actually not many, in every one of the cases, blasting was done in close proximity to water lines and sewer lines and there was no damage. The presentation itself that she provided from 2006 noted that when you do blasting, actually the seismic tremors, they don't follow as flow, they don't go as far and not as damaging either in the ground itself because it's going through soil, rock, et cetera. Now, the seismic forces that are, that go, that are produced outside, above the blasting site, in other words, that would go out, are going to carry further because there's no barriers, it's just going through air. So those are one of the, so those are some of the comments and concerns of neighbors that Ms. Zurfus was trying to allay. Additional one was that there'll be, the removal of trees will mean that some of the neighbors will have a more direct view of traffic on 9G. So to sort of answer that, the applicants are proposing extensive landscaping, they're also proposing to leave a lot of the existing wooded areas to remain, as again, screening through the natural vegetation. More importantly, if this, this neighborhood were developed, or these parcels were developed for parcels, for properties, meaning single-family homes, I can guarantee you that there'd be a removal of almost all the vegetation because that's what they do when they go in to build homes. It's a lot easier to just have a clean site than trying to preserve certain trees because you can't get equipment around them. So to us, this doesn't seem as though it would be necessarily causing new view sheds to be established that would cause more noise and more evidence of traffic to be seen going through. Some of these are just my opinions, but it's also summarizing reports that we've seen from Ms. Zurfus. So Michelle, with that as background, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the, in addition to just the landscaping, when they, when we get to the site plan base, the planning board, as you heard from the one before, really looks at landscaping in depth. And they'll look at that, we're also proposing fences along certain proper, suspect that lights, say car lights, if somebody driving around would shine and that way, and those fences not only will provide the traffic light barrier, but they'll also provide a noise barrier and a screening. With regard to the rock blasting, as I submitted, this, and I, I looked at several things online, really doesn't appear to be much of a problem in this. We are primarily hammer the rock. And then if you happen to hit a little small bit of stubborn rock where you could sit there and hammer for two weeks or put in a light charge and just pop the rock, that might happen. But as far as, you know, huge blasting like you see in movies, how they blasted out west to clear, you know, the gold mines and stuff like that, none of that's going to happen, they won't even have the level of blasting it was in Bellofield. These are just little minor blasts and as Chairman Dupree mentioned at the last meeting, there's blasting masks that they put over the top, which control the dust, the noise. All you hear is a very minor muffle, muff, kind of a muffled pop. And you don't get a lot of dust or chips or anything like that. So we're, we're looking that this is, this would be very, there'll be, at the time they're hammering, you'll hear noise, which, which we're going to try to get the fences up as one of the first things, part of the erosion control plan will actually be to try to get those fences up to cut down the noise. So that's, that's where we're going to deal with those two issues.
Thank you for pointing that out, and let me just, before I go on to our consultants and then get to the public. I did, I, you know, Pete can tell everybody, I'm not the best at trying to scale, but I went back to the Bellofield hotel plans and it appears to me that the nearest house, and those are on Wellwaters, and they're a single-family house from where the blasting occurred, is about 650 feet, I could be wrong. But the apartment building that sits on foundations where it's got the, the parking deck below, then it's two stories or three stories of apartments, that's much closer. And as Michelle just pointed out, the blasting that was done for the hotel there lasted almost three and a half weeks. It was extensive because they're, they're cutting into the ground for footings for a five-story hotel, it's really large. And I put a message into Mr. Boudreaux, the engineer for the project, and Chazen, to ask him if he'd had any complaints from neighbors and he said no, although I'm not sure they would know to go to him. It would probably be around the town and I haven't checked to see if we've heard any concerns. But Tad, do you remember if there were any?
I, I don't remember any concerns.
Cynthia, do you, anybody calling in to complain during that time?
No, but it was pretty visible what was going on at that site, so most residents knew what the blasting was about, so.
And we had also mailed public hearing notices during the time we were discussing it, where we, they knew that there would be blasting. So anyway, I just wanted to point, point out that that was far more extensive than what's envisioned here by any means and that there weren't any issues there, but I do understand residents' concerns, I'm not trying to dismiss them, it's just that part of what we have to do as planning board members is say, okay, these concerns have been raised, can we go out and investigate and see if there's a way to see if they're true, they've happened before, if there have been patterns, things like that. In the presentation from 2006 that Michelle sent us, it appeared that the only case that they could find where there'd been something like that was that there was a, there was increased turbidity, which just means there was some soil inside the well that's quickly settled. And it could, it wasn't anything big enough to cause any kind of repair, there was no damage, there was no reduction in the water, et cetera. There was just some dirt in the water at first, which is not going to be fun for any resident if that occurs. But if that would, say, to only occur for a day or two, I can guarantee you I've had worse problems than that with my own water supplies here and down in Texas where I'm from. So, Michelle, anything else you want to add?
Um, no, you've covered it very well.
We're trying to get public comments tonight, so, Mr. Sotero, comments?
Uh, yeah, well, as far as the drainage goes, I think we've got that pretty well, you know, figured out. As you said, I, I went out a few weeks ago and we walked the site, or walked the neighbors' yards, Donna, Donna Hudak and myself, and we met with Mr. Leonard. As you said, Mr. Leonard is on the south side of East Dorsey Lane. And the issue that he's having doesn't have anything to do with this particular project. We walked on the north side of the road behind where Donna's house is and she had showed me where this, you know, pipe goes through the neighbor's yard. She had some pictures from when her next-door neighbor, Lil Pressy, had dug it up. And we pretty much traced where the outlet is, as you said before, it does go on to the hospice property. The outlet of the pipe is buried at this point. So once we get into the site plan and get into more details, that, you know, we're going to make sure that that water continues to drain through the hospice, you know, property and anything that occurs on hospice is not going to, not going to cause any kind of a backup to that, you know, pipe. So as far as the drain, and then I also had walked behind where the, where the auto body or auto repair shop is and it was, it was very clear where the outlet for the proposed stormwater pond is going to be. And initially, when I looked at some aerials, it had looked at, looked like it was going to be outletting onto a lawn area, but that's not, you know, the case, it's fairly, fairly deep in the woods. And there's, it basically follows wet areas on other adjacent properties until it finds its way to a pond further east on Dorsey Lane. So I think we're, I think we're in a pretty good shape there. As far as the rock, I don't want to spend too much time on it, I did write a memo to the planning board, you know, summarizing all the, all the investigations that we've done up, up to this point. And again, we're at the SEACR process, so there's still going to be more work to be done as we, assuming the project gets a variance and we proceed into the site plan. assuming the project gets a variance, and we proceed into the site plan. But we had a, a virtual meeting with the county health department. So they're, you know, looking into it. They didn't seem to be too concerned with the fact that, again, most of the wells are fairly far away from where the primary rock excavation is going to be. And then I don't remember if I mentioned this in my memo or not, I think I did. But we were also involved, and Michelle had mentioned this, about a new tractor supply that's being built on Route 9 in Wapinshers across somewhere Adams is. And the adjacent neighbors there, who were very, very vocal throughout, you know, the site plan process and who are much closer to the tractor supply project than, you know, the neighbors on Dorsey Lane are. But they discovered that they had quite a bit of rock on the site after they had gotten site plan approval, and they were doing some boring, so they ended up having to hammer the rock. And, you know, the town was fairly heavily involved with other residents. And I verified today or yesterday that, you know, the town did not receive any complaints from adjoining neighbors that their wells had been impacted by the hammering, which went on, you know, for weeks. So, you know, I think between everything that we've done so far to date, where we are in the secret process, I, I don't believe there's going to be any kind of a impact on adjoining wells. But we are still going to continue, you know, to look at it, work with the health department. If we think we need to get a hydro geologist involved, just to be absolutely sure, because I'm not an expert on it, then, you know, we'll do that. The other thing that I did put in my memo that I thought about was, Michelle, when we had our virtual call with the county health department, they, they had said that this is going to be a public water supply. So I, I was assuming that you're going to have to go out and drill your well and test it for quantity and quality as part of your approval with the health department. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We'll have to have it, have the, before we can sign the water treatment, we have to know the quality of the water.
Right, so actually, their own well is going to be the closest affected well whenever they, whenever they do get around, you know, to, you know, the rock excavation. So they're going to have to take whatever, like precautions are necessary to make sure that their own well is going to be protected. So I think at this point, we're in pretty good shape as far as Seeker goes. And, but there are still a few things that we'll look at when we get into the site plan process, so.
Do they have a well now?
No, but they're going to have to go drill one.
So they'll drill the well before they do the rock excavation?
That's right.
Yeah. To get DOH to sign off, they have to have a well in advance.
Yeah, because it's going to be a public water supply, it's going to serve 25 or more people per day. They're going to have to drill the well, they're going to have to test it for, you know, quantity and also, you know, quality. So their well is actually going to be the closest affected well. So.
Thank you, Peter, and thanks for doing all that investigating and all the offline meetings. I want to make sure, I'm not trying to brag, or as was accused in a Facebook post recently, or overly compliment, but the board does take everything very seriously. When, when the neighbors raised the issues last time, which we were mostly aware of from seeing comments sent to the ZBA, we've all been out trying to scour the weeds here to find out, is there validity? And is, if it is valid, is there a way to mitigate, you know, et cetera? So the fact that you met with the different organizations, I think, is very helpful in terms of us moving forward with Seeker as far. Ms. Axelson, comments?
Very quickly, you know, just going to echo what you said, what Pete said. The board does a very, very thorough review before they ever get to the point of concluding Seeker. Our office does a very thorough code review, which deals a lot with a lot of community character and special permit issues. One review to go, but I feel very confident that the board is ready to do Seeker.
I think you're muted. Thank you for stating that and placing it into the record, sorry. It's my coughs, I keep trying to hide them. Ms. Moss, comments? None? Ms. Paul Darrow, comments? None? Wow, okay. Vice Chair Dexter, comments?
I'm, I'm just thrilled that the concerns have been thoroughly looked at. I mean, that's, I, you know, after the last meeting, I was like, wow, that's a lot of information that I, you know, that we didn't have prior. And so Pete, thank you very much for working with the applicant and the neighbors to try to get to the bottom of where is that water coming from? And as I was reading through all the different, all the different perceptions, and, you know, you walked behind the auto place, and it's like, well, the great, the great thing is we now know where the water is for which houses and where it's coming from, and that's, that's only going to help with the long-term design for this. So anyway, I'm just really impressed, so.
Thank you, Ann.
Other than that.
Pickett, comments?
Uh, ditto Ann's comments and all the positiveness on Pete's follow-up. In my evaluation and humble opinion, I think it's a very good opportunity for all involved. It's got minimal impact in that area, the local area, especially with regards to noise, light, any visual concerns, traffic. It's, to me, it seems all a positive, and it is a long-term operation. So it's going to be there for a while, so I'm very positive on it.
Thank you. Ms. Napoli, comments?
Yes, one in particular, I'm hoping the neighbors' concerns have been calm by hearing what has gone on since our last meeting. And the seriousness in which it was taken and looked at to reassure all the neighbors that, that, that the best of what we can offer in terms of any concerns have been offered and provided to them. Other than that, I, I have nothing else to add.
My comment is really just that I want to make sure that the neighbors realizing, realize that when we conclude Seeker, which I expect to do tonight, I've assigned myself to produce the resolution. When we conclude Seeker, it doesn't mean we stop caring about what you have to say. Again, and I checked with Ms. Paul Darrow, our attorney, because there's a special use permit required, it doesn't mean that once we conclude Seeker, we say, okay, now everything's fine, everything's done. So this is a little bit different, because as we, again, a lot of the information that we would normally see before we get to an approval hasn't been provided. I mean, much of, 90% of it has, but some last details have not been, because they're quite expensive to undertake and provide. With the applicants not having any assurance that they're going to get the variance, they've been reluctant to spend that money, because it's not really relevant to getting the variance. And to us, now that we've investigated, explored the issues, they're not necessarily relevant to having a secret determination. But that does not mean that anyone's going to be ignored in the future with comments, because public hearings are open until we close them. So we want to keep hearing your comments. We received, I believe, a new letter yesterday from the Valena, from, uh, Valino, that Michelle responded to, I believe, this morning. My, my timing's a little off, I've been triaging a schedule. But I know that we have two of the residents nearby, and I don't know if you want to speak tonight, but Ms. Curran, would you like to speak? You're muted right now. Mary Jo, you're muted, you have to unmute. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm really pleased to hear that you took everything seriously that we said and investigated everything that we were worried about and talked about two weeks ago.
I'll add, Mr. Sotero, when he mentioned getting a hydro geologist, once we have more data and information, if we feel that's warranted, then that's what we would do next is hire a hydro geologist, which we've done before. This board did it back with Loman, I believe it was, back at the top of Molly's Way. And you'll remember this, we had to hire a hydro geologist to make sure that there wasn't potential drawdown on other neighboring wells from a new well for a new house. So again, we've considered them, and they don't go away until we feel like we've resolved everything. So thank you, Ms. Curran, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Ms. Sodak, would you like to make a comment? If you can hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can, we just can't see you.
I know, I don't know what happened. I wanted to thank, it was a pleasure to meet Mr. Sotero and Ms. Zervos and Mr. Machado. And I really enjoyed visiting with them and showing them around, and it was great that they took the time and the interest to help us. Just another question, though, with the well that needs to be drilled for the hospice, is that going to affect, would that affect our wells, like with the water supply? Because they need so much water, because it's.
I can answer that.
Okay.
I can answer that. This is, this is going to be a 100-foot well at minimum. So it's going to be actually, if your wells, if everyone's wells that we've been hearing from are about 25 to 50 feet, this will be drawing water from a much lower strata, so it shouldn't have any impact. But let me turn it over to Pete and Michelle to respond.
Well, I don't know what, I'm not sure what their projected, you know, flows are, but I don't think that they're that high. Michelle, how much it, I mean, do you have an idea what, you know, the water is a day?
It's, it's about 1,500 gallons a day.
Oh, I mean, that's going to be nothing. They're going to, I mean, as far, you know, they're going to pump it a certain gallons, you know, per minute. So they're probably going to be, I mean, 1,500, if you divide that and get gallons per minute over 24-hour period, you're probably talking about one or two gallons, you know, like a minute, and then you're going to have to add a peaking factor. So, I mean, they're probably going to be only pumping the well at maybe six or seven gallons a minute, which that's nothing, you know?
Yeah, Michelle, maybe you could explain how deep it may go?
Right, yeah. Like Chairman Dupree said, it's going to be a minimum of 100 feet, because they'll have 100 feet of casing. And the shallow wells are drawing from a much higher level. You're basically getting surface water and very shallow groundwater. It will be down into the rock, the deep rock aquifer.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, just out of curiosity, is there, would there be any chance that, you know, Dutchess County or the town would ever put us on the town water supply? Just.
I, I can answer that curiosity. We, we've been working on extending town water since I moved here and got involved. And I've been here 27 years and involved about 20. It's very, you know what it is, is when you hear rock?
Yeah.
It's very expensive to lay the pipe down. And the areas of 9G that are served with water are actually not served with the Hyde Park water. They're served, correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but the City and County of Poughkeepsie Joint Water Board provides that water. And just so you know, it's also had some problems over the years, too, with, basically, if you're at the end of a line, you've got to flush it, or it can cause cancer-causing.
Yeah, we solved that problem, though.
That's, that got solved, so it's, it's, there's a long-term plan, but it's, it's all about money.
Yeah, yeah.
Because certainly, it's, it's better, I mean, I'm fortunate, I'm on municipal water. Tad and I both, we're neighbors, actually, with each other. And we're, and I just discovered when the line from the road into my house collapsed, that I was actually one of the first ones on it, I didn't know that. I assume we were one of the last because of where it's located, but we weren't. But municipal water is fantastic, and we, we have excess capacity, but it's a matter of laying the lines. So the way this works is taxpayers, general taxpayers, don't pay. If you're in a, if you're in a water district, you have to pay for the infrastructure yourself, all the people who are in it. And then you also have to pay, you're individually, you're paid through your taxes or an assessment for the laying of the lines and all that, and the plant, et cetera. That gets paid one way, but then if it goes up, say, your road, if it went up East Dorsey, for you to connect it to your house, you've got to pay for that individually. That's not paid for by the district. So it's, it winds up being expensive. In the case of the neighborhood that is off 9G that, that went for the extension of the Town of Poughkeepsie and City of Poughkeepsie Water, a fueling station had, its tanks had ruptured, and
Yes.
poisonous chemicals went down, and it, the neighborhood was below it. So the plume went right into their water wells, and so they did not have safe water to drink. So the expense they were willing to bear by any means, because they couldn't live off, you know, bottled water forever and showering with bottled water, too. So I don't believe you guys have that kind of problem, thank heavens. But it's a long-term goal, yes, and you should always remember to talk to your ward representative, who I believe is Councilman Marine, and also your, your county legislator, which I believe is legislator Truitt, because it takes political action behind these things, too, to try to find grant money, that kind of stuff. So it's always there, but it never hurts to militate as, as a resident, in other words.
Thank you, thank you. And so once again, thank you for, you know, the time and the investigations. I really do appreciate that and your, all your work that you've been doing. Thank you.
I promise, this is what we're here for.
Yeah.
This is what my colleagues volunteer for. We're, we're residents, too, we want to, if this were, if the shore either, we want to be treated with the equal respect, I, I promise you.
Yeah, yeah, because, yes.
Donna, if you want to, if you want to keep in touch every once in a while, I mean, I'm, I'm very happy to share any additional information with you.
Okay, thank you.
You have my number.
Yeah, thank you.
Is this the only, so this would be the only public hearing we're having, right, for the project?
No, we, we would adjourn this to the 20th, so that we would take action and then allow the, the ZBA to take action on Seeker, I mean, on a, on variance request.
Right.
Although, actually, when does the zoning Board of Appeals meet next? Is it after the 20th, I believe? Is it the 27th?
They met already for this month. So we may as well extend this beyond February.
We should extend it to February, because they don't meet until January 27. Okay, so does anyone know the first, or the date of the ZB? I, I don't have a calendar yet that goes that far into the, I just have January. Cynthia will find that out for us, because she's good at this.
For the ZBA?
No, for the February Planning Board meeting, the first.
What's the next day, the February Planning Board meeting?
Oh, for us, um, February 3rd is our next, is our first February.
Hey, may I get, is there any other comments? Any other questions, comments from anyone? Megan, a motion to adjourn this to February, the public hearing to February 3rd?
I'll make that motion, Ann Dexter.
I'll second that motion, Brett Pickett.
Thank you, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And I believe that you've heard from our consultants, as well as my colleagues that were ready to do Seeker. I do want to point out that because the applicants are here both for site plan, special use permit, and they're here to combine lots, so for minor subdivision, the ZBA will likely, if they do grant the variance request, they'll likely condition it on the subdivision occurring, because by law, they have to grant the minimum required. And if, if they, if they're just looking at one lot, then if it's, you'll understand, but anyway, I think that's how the process would go, is they'd condition this on a combination of the lots, because that means that the minimum is actually less if it's a bigger lot. That's how I wanted to say it, so. Resolution to adopt termination of significance and negative declaration Hudson Valley Hospice House, December 16th, 2020, Resolution 2020-17A. Whereas, 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 and for the audience, these whereas's are just a summation of what we've gone through before. Now therefore be resolved for the reasons set forth in parts two and three of the environmental assessment form. The planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and the draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Of course, I said aye, and there's three absent tonight. A notice, a note that the involved agencies were Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of Transportation, Department of Health, TCDW, which is Department of Public Works, the Department of Behavioral and Community Health, the Conservation Advisory Council, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Creveau Fire District, and Roosevelt Fire District. Thank you, everyone, and.
Quick correction there, it's Mr. Oliver that's absent.
Whoops, you're right. We'll correct that resolution once it's completed and signed.
Got it.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Pickett, since you're here. I want to thank all the consultants for all your work. And also, I need to give a shout out to Mr. Kaminsky for your consultants, your team. I'm not really, we, we don't, it's not very often that we get a applicant's team this dedicated. We're, as soon as we get a letter, we get a response. It's been pretty phenomenal, so congratulations.
Thank you, authentic, thank you for the board, we're looking forward to.
Thank you. Thank you for the board. We're looking forward to the next meeting. And Michelle is absolutely excellent at being able to respond quickly. I appreciate that.
And by the way, with details, not just a, oh, don't worry, it's a detailed response to each one. I mean, I didn't point it out, but she also pointed, she also gave us the flow. It'll be contemplated for 27 homes, you could put, that's would be permitted there, but the flow would be in terms of drawdown on water from, because those would unlikely be 100 feet down. She did a really thorough engineering report and I was like, wow, because I know it takes time to come up with all that data. It's not just like that. So Michelle, congratulations. And may I wish everyone, including our residents who are here tonight, a very happy holiday. Stay safe, stay well, no matter how you celebrate it. But please remember that there is still something to celebrate. The vaccine is on the way, vaccines are on the way. So.
That's right.
And a happy new year.
Yes, a happy new year.
Happy holiday.
We'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Michelle. Happy New Year.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to consider approval of Dance Works 2. As a reminder, we had a public hearing that was closed. We allowed seven days for public comment. Unfortunately, a neighbor who had wanted to comment, at least ask some questions and make comments, was accidentally, did not send it to the correct email. So she resented to Ms. Whitman. Ms. Whitman shared it with you. It's from, I believe her name was Fran White. So rather than just say, I came in too late, I wanted to respond to her concerns. Her first one was about the sign location and her worries were that he would be blocking the safe egress, the safe exit from Lister Drive. As you, the old sign, as you pulled up and with the parking that was in front of the building, if you took a right and tried to take a right to go, or take a left and look to see about who's coming from the north heading south, you couldn't always see cars. So it was a little bit unsafe trying to pull out further. So I wanted to point out that the sign location was analyzed carefully by this board for sightlines and is no longer in the New York State Department of Transportation right of way where the old one was. Accordingly, the new will not only not worsen the situation, but it's going to improve it. Also, Ms. Marco, who's here, did indicate that the front area now is more for drop offs than parking. She actually, I was going to say, you're not even going to allow parking there. When there, if there's going to be an event or a competition or something, they're all going to park in the rear where she's added screening. That brings me to the second point. Ms. White was, I believe she lives probably in the house that's just behind you. The stockade fence is proposed to remain, that was her question. And the arbor body, it does take some time to mature. But I wanted to point out that arbor body is actually faster growing than, say, for example, a blue spruce or a fir. Those are ones we often, you know, talk about and it takes those at least three to four years. The arbor body will be up and providing more screening and more noise attenuation or noise reduction. So I thought that was a very, a really great comment by, by Ms. White, but also it was a good selection by Ms. Marco. I also would like to point out that pines, which is what a lot of people usually say, can't you just put some pines there? White pines are great, but when they grow, they drop their lower limbs. And so it doesn't take, because they're fast growing, it doesn't take long before, there's no screening anymore because it's just the top of the pretty pine tree. So again, the board considered all these things when we looked at her landscaping proposal. Her third question was about the rear parking area and driveouts, whether they would be remained or dirt. They're going to remain unpaved, but that's for a reason. So it's not to increase, increase the amount of water runoff and impervious coverage. And this is actually in keeping with the Department of Environmental Conservation's preferences to have stormwater percolate, you know, go into the ground at site rather than run off an asphalt pavement, because then you're just introducing more stormwater into the drainage, et cetera. So that's why it's being kept the way it is. Fourth, there was an issue that she was asking about where apparently someone in a crazy careening driving, they were trying to take a right on Lister, missed it, went too far and then turned right and crashed into the fence. So my response to that is, is that the fence is indeed a picket fence. It's four feet tall. But it's designed actually to be attractive to drivers, viewers, as we go by, and also to appeal to children because it looks like a playground picket fence. Now, a car plowing through that would be a tragedy whether anyone was inside it or not, because it's probably going to kill the driver. But if a vehicle is going fast enough, I need to point out that it could also flip over a higher, sturdier metal fence, land on its back. The truth of it is, there's no way to design any kind of enclosure such that no damage or hurt to human life will ever happen. That's just not possible. What planning boards try to do is to try to, you know, get to where we think it's the safest possible there is. It's set fairly far back to, they'd have to go through perhaps a telephone pole line, electrical line, electrical light line, or the proposed sign to get through to the fence. But what I was going to say is, is that we just had, I believe Councilman Krepna can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it was about a week and a half ago that we had a reckless driver, I'm told it was going 142 miles an hour on Route 9, hit the library, damaged a crash or an activity scene that's on the town hall site and actually hit the corner of our brick edifice town hall. You can see the cracks in the brick. Fortunately, not many people suffered like life-threatening damage, but I believe I'm told that a police officer was hurt by having his foot run over. In other words, and I don't know if the driver was driving under the influence or what, but this could have been far worse, but accidents are going to happen. And, you know, I believe that in this case, we would hope that the children are unaccompanied, we know that, and that the adult doctor would be able to say, oh, my God, and grab the kids in time. But you can't prepare for every eventuality. And while this is a good point to make, I doubt that that's happened more than once in the 27 years that I've lived here, that there would be someone going into the site. So I wanted to make sure that the neighbor knows that all the issues that she raised are ones that we did consider in going through this. In this particular process, we worked with Ms. Marco, we, what I call front-loaded it. We had a series of pre-application meetings where we discussed a lot of these issues and then we discussed them publicly when we workshop. So I'm confident that we can go ahead with the, approve the site as is tonight. But I wanted to make sure that in answering those, that my colleagues don't have any questions or responses. Ann, Diana, Brent?
Yeah.
Want to add?
No, but I do think, I do thank that person for writing in just because it, those are valid concerns. And, you know, we did, we did consider them.
Absolutely. Kelly, anything you want to add?
The only thing I would add is I do appreciate the concern because it's concern for our community. We have had several conversations with our neighbors behind us and around us just because it's the right thing to do, to have good relationships. And the area that the arboretum will be is not even where parking is. So just the, the area where we have parking is where the stockade fence and there's actually an existing building. So I'm, I'm happy to say that headlights will not be an issue in other people's yards. We would not want to disrupt their daily life. So the arboretum will be there for just kind of offset lighting. But that, you know, it's been a process where we have looked at every angle and really tried to make our impact nothing but positive for the community.
And I think it will be. So I believe Vice Chair Dexter is going to introduce this resolution.
Yes, I will. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution to Grant Site Plan Amendment Approval for Dance Works 2, 1300 Route 9G, December 16th, 2020, Resolution Number 202022A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval to the project subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Do I have a second?
Second, it's Diana Napoli.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and I'm pretty sure it carried unanimously had we had all seven people here, Kelly. Welcome again. We really, not welcome, you're from here, but we want to thank you for taking, keeping your business in Hyde Park and expanding it here and actually purchasing a property to watch it grow and thrive. So good luck, best wishes for the new year and for the holiday season.
Yeah, thank you. Same to you all.
As a member of the town board, I concur. Thank you, Kelly.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all.
And actually, on this resolution, we have Mr. Oliver's being absent, Mr. Pickett is being present. So we just, I'm now looking at all the resolutions. I checked, it was just that one. I'm not sure how that happened.
Sorry, see.
The next item is small. This is the name of the owner at 148 Cream Street. As has been discussed extensively and we had no public comment on this. It's, we're requiring site plan approval because they're adding a three-car, excuse me, a three-car garage with an extensive living space up top. This was circulated. There were no issues there. Let me rephrase that. There was a minor issue. The building itself had to be moved about five feet. And Ms. Moss had asked us properly to keep it open until we had, knew exactly what we were approving. But all that's been taken care of and now we're ready to go. Mr. Berta, do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, not at this time. Thank you.
You've been so patient waiting here. I mean, I was thinking, I hope you're doing something else while you're waiting.
Yeah, I was actually getting some work done.
Good, okay. And I believe that this will be resolutionally introduced by Ms. Napoli.
Yes, small 148 Cream Street, Resolution 2020-19A. Whereas eight times, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project as shown on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his designated to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. And two, approval by the DCBB CH for methods of water supply and wastewater disposal.
From Pickett?
They're next to be in there. They're just kind of Department of Behavior, Community Health.
Yeah, I switched department for board.
I didn't figure out what that was, but I think.
We'll, we'll correct that in the final resolution.
When the county changes the department names, they don't realize how often we need to cite to them.
Is that its new name? Is it now the board instead of the department?
No, it's the Department of Behavior, instead of just Department of Health, it's behavioral.
Oh, I know, and Community Health. So, okay, so we'll just correct the anagram there before we, or acronym, I'm sorry, before we move forward. It's been introduced, motion for and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, all four. Thank you, Mr. Berta, for your patience and have a very happy and safe holiday ahead.
I'd like to thank everybody for all their help in the project and happy holidays to you all. Thank you.
And happy new year.
Look forward to the next time.
Yes.
Love the Aurora Borealis in the background.
I know. He's, when he has, when he's been appearing, he's been both with the Northern Lights as well as in the sunny tropics. So it's been two extremes.
You can tell where I want to be.
Yes, I can. The next item on the agenda is really just a quick discussion. This is for Dollar General located at 1 East Dorsey. As the board and any of our audience members who were called when we were reviewing this, we have a gorgeous coming building. But one of the conditions was that they work with the Department of Public Works and there've been some minor gums in the sort of work, so to speak. So I'd ask Ms. Majulowski to come up back tonight to discuss it. I know we all have had the opportunity to read the memo from DCDP W. It talked about trees, sightlines, et cetera. Mr. Fearetti has been patient, has been here too, and one of the project sponsors as well. So Karen, let me turn it over to you. Welcome back.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. It's been a while. Again, for the record, Karen Majunowski with Bowler Engineering here with Ken Fearetti from HSC Hyde Park this evening. And we thank you for your time and continued patience with this and this request for an approval extension. I can go ahead and give a quick update as it relates to both our approval conditions and specifically to the comments that you have seen from Duchess County DPW on our access to East Dorsey Lane. Just to refresh, our, our proposed site access is a full access to East Dorsey Lane with a write-in only from New York State Route 9G. DOT is satisfied. They've approved everything and we're all set to pull a permit with them. And the access for East Dorsey Lane has been under review for quite some time. DPW has requested additional traffic studies and sightline studies, which are, have all been completed. And based on their latest comments that we just received last week, they are accepting of the driveway location and we're just down to some minor comments to ensure that we are properly grading and have drainage for that area for the proposed access as well as that there are clear sightlines as it relates to the trees that are proposed. They specifically mentioned, they recommend one of the trees on the west side of the driveway, which would be the side closer to the intersection, be removed for sightline purposes and that all the other trees be pushed back further from the roadways. We are okay with both of those items, but we certainly want to make sure that this board is as well because those were placed there during our review with you. So we're happy to discuss that further. And then just a couple other quick updates as they relate to the original approval conditions on the board. As you know, we have a public sidewalk proposed around the entirety of the site frontage on both roads. And since the project began, a utility pole has actually been removed from East Dorsey Lane with the associated guy wire, which is why, as you may remember, on the northeast side of our East Dorsey Lane access, we had a kind of an arc-shaped portion of the sidewalk that actually crossed onto our property. Well, since that utility pole has been removed, we can actually keep the entire sidewalk in the right of way now, which relates to one of those approval conditions. As I mentioned, DOT approved the plans, the health department has approved the plans as it relates to our well and septic. We've submitted a slip to the town. And I believe that takes care of everything. So I'll turn it over to the board. Thank you.
I really wanted you to come tonight and I appreciate that you stayed so patiently as well, since you were sort of late on the agenda. But Ms. Moss and I had a brief discussion and I believe, I don't want to put words into your mouth, Tad, but we, we were trying to avoid this being a site plan amendment. So I think that this could maybe be an as-built where you relocate the trees and the fact that the sidewalk will just be straight instead of having the little walk-around pass around on it. So because you've been very patient yourselves with working toward all the conditions. I had no idea when we conditioned these that this would take you this long. I actually thought you'd be ready to open by March, to be honest with you. So I'm glad you didn't walk away and abandon the project. In other words, Mr. Fearetti, thank you. Because I was a little worried there. After all that we went through, I'm like, no. Oh, I can't, when I drive by that intersection, I look up and I keep seeing the building. I already see it there with landscaping, prosperous, thriving little corner there. It's hard not to when you do what we do and you, you keep anticipating it. So also some people were worried that because of COVID that you guys had abandoned the project. I'm like, no, 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 they're making money. People are still shopping at Dollar General. Don't worry. Grocery stores and stores like yours are still doing well in retail. So at any rate.
You're absolutely correct. We have not abandoned it and I really appreciate all of Karen's hard work in this and staying on top of everything. It's been a lot of moving parts and she's just phenomenal to work with and everyone on the board has been great.
So colleagues, do you have any comments or questions for Karen or Ken? Or consultants? Any questions for Karen and Ken? Well, it was easy. I'm sorry I drug you here then tonight. I just wanted to make sure that it was all going to be copacetic. So, you know, for most of us, when we see remove a tree or move trees, much of my board goes, wah! But he just said push them back in the site some, so I know what he was doing and that's acceptable. So again, we're going to have a nice project out of this site. So I believe, let's see, who's going to introduce this resolution?
The guy that's here.
Thank you. Brent?
Resolution applying tolling period and second 90-day extension of time to satisfy conditions of approval. Dollar General, 1 East Dorsey Lane, December 16th, 2020, Resolution 2019-04E. Whereas, 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 a lot of times. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby applies the tolling period to the project and grants the applicant the second 90-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan approval to and including July 15th, 2021.
Second, Ann Dexter?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Have a very safe, happy holiday, however you're celebrating, and of course a happy new year. And I think we, I won't be seeing you in the new year unless there's any more issues, but it sounds like you're finally resolving them. So the next thing I should see would be plans to sign, which will make me very happy.
Yes. And we, it probably would have been on the cusp of that original, I think we were at January 15th, 2021. So we just wanted to be proactive with that. And so we, yeah, we may not see you again, but we look forward to submitting plans.
And I hope we get to work together in the future. And I want to give a shout out to our secretary, Ms. Whitman, as well as Ms. Paul Doro. Ms. Whitman tracks all the, we're not supposed to track and inform applicants, but she does because we want to be, as I said, friendly to commercial development, all development, I should say. And I also want to thank Victoria because actually adding up the tolling periods isn't as easy as you might think. It's based on the governor's executive orders and every time we do this, because we also want to give you as much time as possible. But it's very cumbersome on her part and she just holds her nose and does it every time. So thank you, Victoria, for all that. Okay, Doug, we'll see, again, we won't see, but I'll be looking forward to seeing the plans. Thank you.
Yes.
Bye.
Happy holidays. Stay safe.
Happy New Year.
The rest of our items on our agenda are housekeeping. The first is a release of escrow. And I'm going to make, I'm going to make, introduce this resolution 20-B to authorize the release, authorize the town board to release the escrow for the following applications. Hospice, and this is not Hospice House, this is Hospice, we'll call it headquarters, kitchen storage. Action Storage, Minster Solar Array, Nichols Oxygen, PLT Storage Yard, River View Re subdivision. And Teconic Realty Re subdivision.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Anybody have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. By the way, there are some substantial amounts there. Wow.
Yeah. They'll be happy to get them back.
This may be a Christmas bonus for these people to get this money back. When I, when I looked and saw that there's almost five thousand dollars in an account that hasn't been touched, I was like, that, that will come in handy.
Maybe a New Year's bonus.
There you go.
And then we have resolutions, which I will introduce. Because I was assigned that by Cynthia.
Chairman?
Yes.
Um, we may have missed discussing the local law.
Whoops.
Local law manning, chapter one oh two, timber.
I went right past that. My, my apologies. Thank you. Thank you, I'm telling you, the right side of my brain's working tonight. Thank God, with an assist. No one had any comments.
Were rearranging the, the order.
No, so there were no comments except for Stephanie's that there is a duplicative paragraph. And I went through, I, I went through the whole thing and didn't see anything either. So. I guess what I'm going to ask for is a motion, just my motion would be to say, we recommend you adopt the law as presented with the exception of deleting the duplicative paragraph. And that's going to be it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, went through, was reading this and I'm trying to identify. When does it come before the planning board? I, I know if somebody goes for a harvest. And they get a New York State. Computer consultant, or I mean. Consultant, or you get a professional forester that come before the city. But at what point in time? Is it considered a commercial harvesting versus? Somebody that wants to take down four trees someplace and it's a commercial guy that's going to use.
So, yeah, no, no. So you weren't, we, we had a law similar to this before. So in essence, they would go to Tad and say, this is what I want to do. And Tad would say, then here's the form to fill out. If it's, I want to cut down four trees, that doesn't, they didn't even come to Tad. So these would be really.
Exaggerating when I said four trees, but at one point this related to acreage or. Or number of trees or.
I, I. I think it's more related to the contract. And how the landowner is managing the timber. And how the harvester processes it. It's, it has to be a commercial operation.
Right.
So it's got to be a pretty big, pretty big deal.
Okay, all right.
I don't think I've seen.
This is for commercial. Yeah, this is for commercial.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen anything on less than ten acres.
Got it. Okay, so this is something, if they came to you for it. If you had a question, you'd kick it back to them and tell them, go to state or something like that. If somebody just.
Yeah, they've got to set up a landing area. They've got to have a place where they process the logs. They have to pick them up and put them on log hauling trucks. They have to have. You know, all, all kinds of prescriptions for how much cover they leave and how much they're taking and. What they're doing with the slash and cross river crossings have to be in conformance with certain standards and it's a big deal.
Right, okay. I just, I was reading and looking through all that, trying to understand it. And I, I was kind of going, okay, what is, what's obvious, what's a gray area and what is?
So here's an example of a gray area. When the owners of the Bella Field site. Years ago, they undertook some, what, what we'll loosely call clear cutting.
Yeah.
There were many, there were many phone calls to the DEC complaining, the DEC contacted Tad. And they determined that she should go out and take a look and see what was going on. And ultimately, they applied for a timber harvesting license and received it. One of the issues is, is that the, when the prior law. Was, I don't remember if they repealed it exactly, Ted.
It was rescinded, yeah.
Rescinded, I think. So what it was is that then it became, there was no discretion. If they did A, B, and C, Ted had to give them the permit, no matter what.
Within ten days.
Within ten days. So what this law basically does is it allows, I'll, I'll be honest with you, we processed a couple of these applications. Ann and I, and we actually met. Not looking at his name.
Property.
Lou Territo, Lou Territo, I believe is his name.
Yep.
Brain is still working. So we met Mr. Territo on site and he explained everything, how they would do it, where the staging was, what the process was. He told us which kinds of trees he would take out. And we mostly, when we had the public hearing, it's a way for neighbors to learn this is going to happen and not be freaked out. That's really what it's about because Wednesday, if they hit the ABC, it's just like us, if it's in loud use, we kind of have to allow it to unless there's. Potentially negative impacts that they can't be mitigated by project changes. So, but it's a way to allow others to know what's happening instead of the freak out over the, everybody calling the DEC. With what, with what happened at Bellfield, although that wasn't a bad freak out because they did come back and apply. So we knew what was going on. Because you don't really want timber, timber management to be, or silviculture to be managed poorly. There's a lot of restrictions by DEC, including the amount of mud that can come out on a public road. I mean, there's a lot to it. But this just more or less reinstates the fact that there'll be a more formal process of review over it. So.
So the, so if there's a gray area, when Bella Field comes in for their next phase. Of approval, that will be under a development rather than a timber harvest.
Right, okay.
So that's kind of a in between because there's an approved plan and we know where they're going to put the houses, where the roads are going, where the plan. It's also Jeffrey Groves did a bunch of clearing. And that's, that's kind of the gray areas between the development.
You put a stop work order on the Jeffrey Groves because I had not signed the site plan yet. They were trying to do pre-development work, which we don't allow unless there's something signed.
Okay, thank you.
So.
They also have to get a stormwater permit.
Do what?
Do they have to get a concurrent stormwater permit for landing areas and access or no?
I have not read the current law in detail. They don't, they previously, according to DEC, did not need a stormwater permit. Because they would voluntarily comply with the standards. But if the landing area was over, which is where they process and store the logs and pick them up and move them. If that was greater than an acre, then they did need a stormwater permit.
Okay.
That's still there. That's still there. It's over a certain size threshold and triggers the fact they needed SWIP or some sort of stormwater permit.
Thank you.
Good question, though. Anybody else? So Megan, a motion to authorize me to send a very simple letter recommending that they adopt it with removing the.
Don't move, Diane Denafly.
Thank you.
Second in, Rod Pickett.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now the resolutions to appoint consultants for the next year. Resolution. Sorry. Resolution to appoint, reappoint Rodenhouse and Shaw Paul Doro as legal consultants for twenty twenty one, December sixteenth, twenty twenty, resolution twenty dash C. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Rodenhouse and Shaw Paul Doro for the year twenty twenty one.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Good discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next resolution is to reappoint CPL team as planning and engineering consultants for twenty twenty one. December sixteenth, twenty twenty, resolution twenty dash D, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract. To engage CPL, is it CPL team, Pete or CPL?
Uh, CPL.
Remove the team from the resolution to engage CPL for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Second, Ann Dexter.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Resolution to appoint Nelson Pope and Vorus LLC as planning consultants for twenty twenty one, December sixteenth, twenty twenty, resolution twenty dash E. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Nelson Pope. And Vorus LLC for the year twenty twenty one.
Second, Ann Dexter.
Aye.
On favor? Yes, thank you. Aye.
We'll just move this further along.
Thank you.
Absent.
And Megan, yes, with three were absent. And Megan, a motion to adjourn while wishing everyone a happy holiday and thank anybody still watching us at home for staying with us.
Don't move, Diane Denafly.
On favor?
Means we seconded.
Oh, sorry, seconded by Mr. Pickett. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. If we can remain. If we can remain after the adjournment for a fest.